City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the robe.
Counselor Cadim.
Here.
Dion.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Carrera. Ponti.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting of law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing or may transmit this hearing to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have item number one. There are two individuals who have signed up for Citizens Input Time. I'll remind those individuals they have a three-minute limit. First, we have Renee Brown. Subject matter, VSO.
So, three minutes doesn't stop until I get there, right?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right, your time's up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. President. I come to you tonight as the commander of the Fall River War Veterans Council, and I'll speak to you on my own behalf and on behalf of our membership. In January of this year, I was honored to be elected as the commander of the Fall River War Veterans Council. And if you don't know what the Fall River War Veterans Council is, it's a nonprofit entity in good standing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's comprised of other nonprofit veteran organizations. They select delegates. They come to our meeting. We meet once a month, and we do a variety of activities. We raise money for a scholarship fund. Sometimes the VSO will call, and there's a family in need. We'll donate funds for that. We maintain accounts that are responsible for maintaining the cleaning of the Vietnam Wall down at the park, or the Hiroshima monument, or the Korean War monument. So, the Fall River War Veterans Council, for those of you that don't know what it is, if you are more interested and want to meet our membership, we meet on Thursday nights. Reach out to me, and you can come before the meeting starts and meet some of our membership. I encourage you to. I'm here tonight in support of Talos Ferris, the VSO, and over the years, the membership of the Fall River War Veterans Council has declined, and it declined due to some internal issues, a lot of bickering. They didn't have the greatest relationship with the Veteran's Service Office, and I can't blame just one person. I can tell you that a lot of personalities over the principle of helping veterans prevailed, and, you know, there were a lot of rumors and gossip about the VSO. And over the last few years, because of this turbulent relationship between the Fall River War Veterans Council and every single Veteran's Service Officer that ever filled that role, we lost members. And I am happy to say that with the help of Talos, right? Personally, with the help of Talos, when I was elected commander, I reached out to the VSO. And up until that point, I have to admit that all I was educated on were rumors and gossip about Talos Ferris. And people said, you know, mean, insulting things about him, but I'm an educated woman, and, you know, I'm not a kid anymore. I don't listen to rumors and gossip. My first phone call was to Talos Ferris, and I asked him to lunch, because I wanted to know who he was and get a feel for, you know, how committed is he to helping our local veterans? I can tell you as a council that the sentiment among a lot of our Bristol County veterans is that the administration doesn't care about them. And they say that because they don't see all of you visit their functions sometimes. I can tell you that a lot of you do attend or you donate, but I would encourage you. Ken Levek from the Bristol County Veterans Association is here tonight, just in the 207.
Rena, can you try to wrap it up? I got three minutes.
Is here, and they always have events. I would encourage you to find out and go. But I want to tell you that if it wasn't for Talos, the Fall River War Veterans Council would not have a working relationship with a lot of these organizations. They had alienated themselves from a lot of the organizations, and they were losing members. Talos met with me, and the first thing he did was set me up with a meeting with the presidents and vice presidents and commanders of most of the local groups that didn't want anything to do with them.
If she needs more time.
Motion to waive the rules for another three minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
But I'm proud to say, with Talos's help, single-handedly, the Fall River War Veterans Council works hand-in-hand with the largest veteran organizations in Bristol County. And I can tell you that we're excited to be working with the Bristol County Veterans Association. They've got a new place. We're excited over that. We support them, they support us. You know, the 207 has 64 members of Vietnam vets, right? Their headquarters is located in Fall River. I mean, twice a week or twice a month, John Processes appeals for veterans at the Disabled Veterans Organization down at Bristol County. There are hundreds of veterans out there that need support. I'm here to say that the Fall River War Veterans Council is excited that Talos Ferris is finally, finally, before you, and you get to learn about him too. He waited too long to come before you. He was intentionally delayed in ordinance. I thank counselors Raposo and Cadim for pulling that out of ordinance and bringing it here before the City Council. I would encourage you to take a minute to visit him at his office. He's a wonderful guy. We have a working relationship with the Student Veterans of America. There's a group of them at BCC. I mean, there are organizations I didn't know existed until I sat down and made an educated adult decision to work with Talos Ferris. So, on behalf of my membership and many veterans in the area, we support him. We thank you. We hope you support him, and we invite you to come meet some of the veterans that live, work, and especially vote in Bristol County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jordan Sylvia. Subject matter, city of Fall River.
Good evening, everybody. I'm willing to pass my phone around to show... She just took a couple of words like right out of my mouth. It's uncanny. I wrote this at 11:00 in the morning. It's timestamped. But from the commander of the Fall River Veterans Board?
War Council.
War Council to a Fall River War veteran, right? Jordan Sylvia, great to be here again, but I'm a little blown away. I see my kids over here, right? So, it's my son Wyatt's birthday today. He turns 12, and all of this stuff is coming back to full circle, because I remember sitting here one time, and me and Linda were going back and forth laughing about it, where one time I came here when my son was Charlotte's age, when he was like this, and I left his shoe up here. It was always like a good moment. Here we are 10 years later. My kid turns 12 today. But, so, back to the point about the more things change, the more they stay the same. Rena, great speaking. I wanted to speak about Talos, too, because when he came up here, you know, he made his comments about city councilors meddling in the administration, and I don't know how much people will pay attention to what's going on with me, but I have this little quarrel with the local radio thing. But I remember years ago, you guys, some of you guys may remember, some of you guys are young to be on here, but I remember Joe Kamara, Linda Pereira, I believe it was a domestic call, I'm not sure what it was, but it was an FRPD response for service to Mike Herons, was at the location, Michael Heron, and there were two city councilors sitting there waiting to talk to the FRPD. So, the meddling from the City Council in Fall River, you know what I mean? It's been going on about as old as my son is, and I'm sure it probably predates that as well. So, and again, Mr. Ferris, he's a veteran, and he's saying he's being retaliated by all these people who say they love veterans. They say that stuff, but in their actions, you know what I mean? That's not how they conduct themselves. It's pretty much obvious over the years, and I've always say, the election happens early November, Veterans Day comes right after, and then they raise everyone's, every veteran in Fall River's taxes like right after that, like the next City Council meeting, just kind of the way the timeline goes. But I wish, I wanted to honestly speak to Counselor Pereira today. She's not here. I'm not sure if it was an excused absence, but I seen her watching my video that I posted last night about this woman who died at the rail trail. That's been something kicked around a little bit in the news and in Fall River lately. I think you guys passed ordinance about it. But allegedly, you know, someone reaches out to me and says, hey, this woman was treated as an OD down at the rail trail, which again, happens, right? It's a tragedy, but the woman says actually she was like raped and murdered down there.
Can you try to wrap it up? Your three minutes are up.
Yep. Can I get a little more time? It's a very serious topic. I know the person in front of me.
I think you're free. No time.
Motion to waive the rules for another three minutes.
Motion to waive the rules for three minutes made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have another three minutes.
I know that breaks your heart, Joe. I appreciate it. My fine esteemed counselors here giving me the extra time. There's only two people here. So, again, if people want, if people want the city allegedly to participate, and citizens to participate, 6,000 people showed up to vote, no one cares about the electoral process in Fall River. I know firsthand. I've had to try to get signatures and try to get people to vote for me. Maybe they should be more... I've always said, when I come down here, it should be citizens discussion. It shouldn't be, because normally I talk to the wall, but when I came, I know, I have relationships with some of you guys over the years, friendly relationships. I appreciate what you do. These two young men are very intelligent guys, obviously, take the political stuff aside. Ricky, I love you. I voted for you, but you quickly came in and raised my taxes immediately, but that's all right. Everyone does that. Everyone else did it, too. But just on the point of the city, it's, again, back to things, I can't even say things stay the same. They're actually getting super worse, right? So, $500 million budget. I think there's 130 police officers. That's like, as someone who worked the job, who knows like what it takes to have a safely-staffed department, that's like extremely concerning for my children, right, who live in the city. It's a complete waste of money. Then, let's go to the fire department, the Gabriel Fire. 10 Fall River citizens that, you know, you guys represent pass away. We saw how that was handled. The fire department, union chief had to come out and beg for more money and say, people are dying, because that's how incompetent the city's been to grant. You saw the way the mayor handled it. He looked like a complete fool, blamed the chief. It was a total nightmare, and then they came up with money out of thin air, right, to all of a sudden fund overtime. Like, again, people try to gaslight me all the time. I see with my own eyes how horribly ran the city of Fall River is, dude, and it's sick. It's disgusting, and it's sick. The schools, I guess they had to get rid of MCAS. I don't know if that was like, that was like a state ballot initiative or whatever, but the results are steadily worse. I've seen you, Sean, rightfully ask, when they come up and ask for more money, like, hey, now they have that new bill they passed to give an extra 100... And you're like, are we almost approaching where like we have enough money for schools? And that, you know, that answer's never-ending, bro. The answer is they'll never have enough. I've been saying that for 10 years, right? You guys are intelligent, dude, and you're the young ones on here. Some of these people have been in here for 30 years, like, you know, I would wish they would move on and do something else in their lives, but forget about even the way the cities ran with the departments. Let's go to the, this is the real part that bothers me, is the quality...
You have 10 seconds left, your extra three minutes.
Yep. I get two more seconds just to wrap this up, maybe another minute. I do pay taxes on several buildings here. I have a city, I have a business here. I don't know if Joe Kamara has the level of investment in Fall River that I do. He loves to shut me up and get me out of there. Two people signed up for Citizens Input.
Motion to waive the rules for another...
I'm trying to. I'm trying to. He's trying to throw me out again.
Motion to waive the rules for one more minute.
One more minute, that's all I'm asking for.
Motion isn't made in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Give an additional minute.
Clerk, I get two more. I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. I always ask, right? Always ask for more. You're a sales guy. Nah, but really, my biggest, I try to keep it like a little levity here, but my real problem is, again, I've been saying this, this gentleman came on my podcast, we talked about it. The American dream is evaporating, right? And this is in Fall River, and I think, again, I talked with Dave Pereira this week about, I bought my first house for 200 grand seven years ago in Fall River. Now, it's going for six or seven, right? So, for these kids, them trying to do what I did, coming, I come from the projects, at least they're starting on second base, you know what I mean? But that's just me. That's first-world problems. Let's go back to the tents. You got two tents at Burger King. They're right on Plymouth Ave now. I tell my wife, half joking, they can only go on the median on Plymouth Ave to be more in the public. You know what I mean? Like, that's how bad this whole entire thing, the Fall River government, I'm not running for office, guys, right? This is just stuff I care about, obviously. I've been coming here for 10 years, been threatened, been boycotting my business just because I care about this, though. I care about my country. That's why I put my life on the line to serve my country. But from the people I talk to, the homeless people that I know personally, everyone I talk to, even paying my own bills, when you guys just continue to raise all the bills, I'm not saying it's you. I'll talk about why houses are, you know, 300% increase in five years or whatever it is.
Your minute is up now.
Thank you, and I am going to leave. I appreciate the extra time, guys, but I'm saying that people in Fall River, I always say, they're getting smoked. They're getting killed. This is mal, this is malpractice, bro, and how the government in Fall River, state, national, whatever, for you guys. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. At our last City Council meeting, I think it was during Citizens Input Time, where we at a body sent a letter to the administration asking for them to give us an update or do some kind of internal investigation on the claims that were levied by our VSO agent. Has there been any response back from the president to the clerk from the administration on if that investigation has been commenced, if it has been concluded? Has there been any kind of communication with council leadership in your office?
Not as of yet.
Okay, so I guess I'll just ask again, on the record, that the administration provide the City Council, whether it's through our leadership or through your office, Madam Clerk, an update on this. There were some serious claims that were levied against a city employee or an elected official for that matter, and I think we owe that department head a response in common courtesy of an investigation to be commenced or not. Now, for the record, I did send a letter to the Human Resource Department, and I asked them to follow up and give us an update. Now, I recognize that this is in executive branch duties, and we don't investigate employees, but when the veteran agent came down before this honorable body and made it apparent that he wasn't getting anywhere from the executive branch, I think we owe some kind of a response to that department head, and I'm starting to hear a lot more things that are raising concern. So, Mr. President, I just ask if you could please follow up with...
Yeah, absolutely, Counsel.
With the mayor and the Human Resource Department and the city administrator to find out if this has been closed and what the results of that are.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield.
I just want to state for the record, in my 30-plus years being here, I've never been accused or blamed for anything that's happened. I know the citizens, the president spoke at Citizens Input Time, tried to tie Counselor Pereira and I to something that happened to someone's house, I don't know when, but I just want you to know that there's never been one complaint brought against me, and I'll just clear myself, in my entire time I've been here, by a city employee or anyone else. Excuse me?
Is that factually true? Were you not at the place that got involved?
I was never in a house where the police officer doing any investigation in my entire life. That's why nothing happened, when that officer complained that, whatever his complaint was, not one superior officer followed through with that. So, whatever you're talking about, and the reporter, yes, so you believe we're reading the papers, are you telling me? There you go. So, you can, you can look into it all you want, and let me know.
Counselor President.
I just don't like the accusations coming down here, when my name's being called out on something that never happened. I'll tell you right now for the fact, I've never been in that situation, was in the house with any police officer, any fire department officer doing any investigation.
Point of order, Mr. President. Mr. President.
I appreciate the comments.
You have, you do have to defend yourself.
No, no, I just want to be clear, because people hear things in Citizens Input Time, and then they think that it's true.
Look at the source, and it's all, I mean, anyone could just start spreading rumors about it.
Correct.
So, it's not right to do.
If it not mentioned my name, I wouldn't say anything, but since my name was mentioned, I'm letting people know.
You do not have to defend yourself. You know that.
I'm letting people know.
I yield.
Just to stay clear. Also, on that note, I do want to let you know that Counselor Pereira had a commitment, that's why she's not here. She had a prior commitment, she can't make it. And I also want to welcome the Assistant City Clerk, Chelsea Pacheco. Chelsea, welcome.
Welcome.
Item number two.
Mr. President, do you need a motion on Counselor Ponti's request, or are you good with...
I don't think, it's up to him. You want to make a motion?
I mean, I think as a body, we sent one, maybe it'd be wise to do it again.
So, I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made duly noted as requested by the council. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, the resolution, the MS submit and request cease the operation of the Enterprise Fund from Department of Emergency Medical Services and establish a special revenue account for the deposit of all ambulance receipts referred on 9/9/2025. Hopefully, everybody's happy. Good evening. Good evening. Counselor T. S., Counselor Ponti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did not sponsor this great resolution, or the idea of the resolution, but my colleagues in Seat 1 and 2, I want to first off commend them for the innovative thought process here of trying to bring in additional revenues for the city. Now, I state this contradicting myself, because I think we're all searching for ways to try to bring in new revenue, but not, I want to make this clear, not put the EMS department in a more challenging, less lucrative situation. I think the premise behind this resolution is up for discussion tonight, and I'd like to hear from you, Mr. Dion. The fact that this resolution says that the EMS Enterprise account considered what it is, it's a self-sustaining account, what research have you done if you were to abolish the Enterprise account and bring it into the general fund?
Point of order, do you think the resolution should be read so people understand what's being discussed?
We could. I read the...
Sure.
At the beginning. Madam Clerk, do you have the resolution with you?
I do.
Give me it, please.
Resolution was sponsored by Counselors Shawnee Cadim and Michelle Dion. Whereas the Department of Emergency Medical Services EMS within the city of Fall River is currently operated as an enterprise fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half. And whereas the City Council recognizes the importance of ensuring that the Department of EMS operations remain financially stable and accountable while also aligning with the city's overall fiscal structure, and whereas the continuation of the Department of EMS as an enterprise fund is no longer deemed to be in the best financial or administrative interest of the city, and whereas the City Council believes that establishing a special revenue account for all ambulance receipts will provide greater fiscal sustainability and flexibility for the city, now therefore be a resolved that the Fall River City Council hereby respectfully requests that the mayor submit a request to revoke the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws to the City Council, thereby seizing the operation of the Department of Emergency Medical Services as an enterprise fund effective with the commencement of fiscal year 2027, and be a further resolved that upon such revocation, a special revenue account be established for the deposit of all ambulance receipts.
So, Mr. Dion, let me first off retract my question by asking you, do you intend to send down a request to revoke provisions, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half?
A decision hasn't been made about that, Counselor.
Okay, so what research or from financial studies have been done to find out if bringing the EMS Enterprise account into the general fund is in the city's best interest?
We haven't done any financial studies on moving that EMS fund yet. We do know that the administration wants to take a look at it. We want to work with you as councilors to see what the positives and the negatives are. Your Counselor in Seat 1, I've had numerous conversations concerning the Enterprise Fund. He's brought up some great, great information to me and to the administration, and it's something, like I said, we want to work with you on, to look at, seeing if it's in the best interest of the city residents to eliminate it.
So, I respect that you don't have the answers to my questions now, and that is fair. Chief?
It's early, that's why, that's why I bring this up, is we want to do this right. We want to make sure, you know, I spoke, spoke to you with the chief this morning. We've had an EMS account since 2008. That's 17 years. So, I want to do it the right way. Don't want to do it the wrong way, and I know with the, with us working together, city councilors, with Counselor Cadim and Counselor Dion, yourself, all yous, I think we can get to what you want to get to at the end, what's in the best interest of the residents.
Chief, I respect the fact that the EMS Enterprise account has brought in additional revenue to the city fiscal year over fiscal year. I also recognize that the indirects that the EMS Enterprise account has contributed to the city's overall operational budget is something that, to me, is pretty glaring and pretty clear. What is your initial thoughts about eliminating the EMS Enterprise account?
I don't think that, I don't think, even, I actually broke the subject with other Public Safety Department heads to say there is a way to utilize the Enterprise Fund to a better benefit to the other public safety agencies that are in the city. There is a way to better utilize some of the funding that is in EMS and some of the monies that are left over at the end of the year, but it hasn't come to any serious conversation, which I think can be addressed and accomplish the same thing that you're trying to accomplish.
All right, so, I don't know what, what we're trying to accomplish yet, but I want to ask you this, because we have a half hour before our Committee on Finance, and this appears to be the only item on our agenda. Best practices that you're hearing from other communities?
Correct.
That have, A, abolished their Enterprise account, or it's just in their general fund, or not, or utilizing, as to your words, utilizing the EMS Enterprise account to be a better resource to the city side from a financial revenue aspect? What are those best practices, and why does it take, I guess, this resolution, or the thought of possibly abolishing the Enterprise account being something that is going to allow us to start thinking about this?
I've actually been saying for, I've actually brought forward the suggestion, and I think we've discussed this?
Yep.
About the fee for service that's not even in our operating budget, that we pay for fire responses is about $300,000 to $400,000 a year. I think that that money could be better served in a revolving account that could benefit the public safety agencies. It goes into the general fund currently. I don't know what...
If I may interrupt you, Chief. Fee for service, for those people who not understand that, what does that mean?
So, at the end of every year, the percentage, and this was determined a long time ago, it hasn't been adjusted in a long time, the fire department gets reimbursement of free cash, 13% of our free cash at the end of the year.
For EMS?
From EMS to fire. Four runs that they come out and support us.
Okay, if I can stop you for a moment. 13% of the EMS Enterprise accounts, what?
Free cash.
Free cash.
At the end of the year.
And where does that go?
Stays with the Enterprise Fund.
See, no, it goes into the general fund.
Can our CFO, interim CFO or Director of Finance come down, please?
Sure. Come down.
What is that number usually, Chief, thirteen percent of free cash, what is that number, what was that number last fiscal year?
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I think, correct, right around three, three twenty-nine, three seventy-nine.
Okay, Ms. R. Key, in terms of the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand that came back from EMS to the General Fund, what did the city do with that three hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
To start, it's not free cash, it's not thirteen percent of free cash, it's thirteen percent of that PCG.
The PCG reimbursement.
Right, it's thirteen percent of the PCG reimbursement, which is based on the number of calls that are answered.
But it equals, she said, whether it's, the lingo's wrong or not, that doesn't matter.
There's a revenue line in the budget for it.
And, and, and what does that do? Where, that just goes back into the General Fund?
It's part of the General Fund, yeah, it's, it's within the General Fund revenue lines, if you look at, I want to say it's under fees, it should say Fire Department, and it says call revenue.
Okay, so, this is, this is an amount that's transferred at the end of the year during recap?
It's, no, no, it's not done at the end of the year or during recap, it's done at the end of the year because the payment for PCG comes in, in about June every year, so that's why it's done at the end of the year, because they get, EMS gets a lump sum payment for the year in June each year, so that's why the transfer's made at that point.
I understand, okay, so, back to my, I guess, my line of questioning, Chief, is what other best practices from a financial revenue standpoint besides the fee for service, which I appreciate your, your honesty about, the city should be utilizing more from a revenue perspective?
So, I think there are, we haven't even delved into the possibility, or if it's even a possibility, to try to match some of that, maybe not equal, but match some of that percentage for police responses for just strictly five threes, which are strictly medical-related calls that don't involve, that they're only there strictly for EMS. The tricky part with the PCG money is that you can't, the fee for service can't be involved for motor vehicle accidents, that a fire truck would have to be on anyway, or a police car that has to go to a motor vehicle accident anyway, but the calls that they go on to where they're strictly there for us, like nosebleeds and things like that, I think that there's an opportunity there for them also to benefit from that PCG at the end of the year that we haven't discussed.
Okay, so, you're, how much do you supply in indirects every fiscal, this fiscal year? Back to the city.
Probably close to, I think we, I thought I figured it out for the last meeting, I think it's thirty, thirty-eight percent of our overall budget.
Which is how much?
Probably close to four million.
Okay, are you still paying firefighter salaries?
Yes.
Because somebody told me for some reason today that, that's not the case anymore, but...
So, as of next fiscal year, because they're not a direct expense, I said that we would change them from a direct expense and add them into our direct expense, our indirects next year, so that that five firefighters would still be reimbursed to the city.
So, you're gonna, so you're just pretty much moving it around?
Just moving it around.
So, you're gonna just increase your indirects next year?
Correct.
To pay for those five firefighters?
I pay for five firefighters a year.
And how much money does the EOP grant usually supplied, generally speaking, we've turned it down the last couple of years, how many firefighters is that good for?
That overtime reimbursement, they got one point six million dollars from the governor this year, it was split.
We don't turn that down.
No, there was, what was the, what is the safer grant? I'm sorry, safer grant.
We applied for five, and hopefully we will get, we switched that application to ten.
We haven't been applying for it, is what you're asking.
That's my point, the last couple of fiscal years.
We didn't apply for it.
You did apply for it?
We just applied for the safer grant.
For next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
For ten, for five individuals, we're gonna increase that to ten, hopefully.
Look, being completely candid with you, I think a lot of this frustration from councilors was as a result of what happened, that lease situation, which we don't have to rehash bad, bad moments here, but there was some frustration made from an accountability standpoint that the council felt a little slighted and disrespected, I have since had a meeting with you, Chief, and I have, I urge all of my colleagues to do the same thing as well, I think there's a lot of dynamics at stake here that the public and some councilors might not be aware of, but I'm just gonna state that I think we have to have a united front when it comes to public safety in the city, I think that the Fire Department and EMS need to kind of work out any intricacies and differences that they may have, I think there are some communication issues based on what I hear, and what I hear, and what I listen, and what people say to me, and I think that a larger discussion as you plan your financial analysis going into the next fiscal year with our current EMS chief is vital, especially as the city's trying to find ways to increase additional revenues, I think some of the ideas that she has that may, and maybe it's because there hasn't been a steady city administrator here for a while, the ideas that our chief has in EMS are good, there are a lot of good ideas there to help the city from a revenue perspective that I think she needs to be heard, and I'm not saying that she said she hasn't been heard, I'm just saying, having elevated conversations in our office three weeks ago had me, had me have a different perspective in terms of what revenue that this department generates, and I'm not saying that the city needs to take advantage of the EMS Enterprise Account, what I'm saying is there needs to be a better alignment of fiscal policy, financial policy, financial policy that I've been asking for, for a very long time, that we really haven't begun, but I know you're working on, these are the, these are the elevated conversations that we need to have, and now that we have an interim city administrator, and then there's some clear communication between the three of you, I want you to elevate that conversation, because what she's bringing to the table and the revenue that this department brings in is something that the city needs to capitalize on, you know, everybody's saying us, we raise taxes all these times, and we do all these other things for people, we obviously have bills that we need to pay, but the amount of money that they're generating is, is, is important, now, I say that without, without missing the point here, that I do not want to, I, hopefully, it's a situation where we're not shutting down rescues, which you've identified to me is not happening, to do MIH transfers to hospitals, as long as we are there and the phone is getting picked up for nine-one-one calls when this community needs our EMS, and they're responding, I want to continue to make sure that that's not happening, we're not closing rescues to do MIH transfers, so I just want to make that clear, too.
We understand that the public safety is our priority, and we are taking that very seriously, and you, if you have that problem, I want you to, if, or somebody comes to you, I can assure you that it's not gonna happen, but if they do, please pick up the phone and call me.
In terms, last question, in terms of a time period, in terms of when you're gonna do your analysis, if this makes financial sense or not for the city, when could we expect that?
Couple months.
It's like January first?
Maybe.
It'll be part of the, the next couple of months, before we go into budget.
We're gonna look at this thing, and we're gonna look at it very well, okay, we have a lot of priorities coming up that we understand, we're gonna do it right, okay, and it might be getting rid of the Enterprise Fund, I don't know yet, but we're gonna sit down, I wanna listen to all what you have to say, the mayor wants to listen to the whole process, your councillor in Seat One brings up a lot of great ideas, want to listen to those ideas, because those ideas might be right, and might be what's good for the city, so, it'll be in the future.
Okay.
I think before the twenty-seven budget is submitted, we'll provide you with a full analysis separately before we get to that point of submitting what we think is best, we'll, we'll make sure to have those conversations before then.
How many like cities have an EMS Enterprise Account?
I would have to do some research, actually, after our last meeting, I did some, I looked at seventeen communities that are third service EMS, and I think it's Fall River, New Bedford, Boston, and I think Sheesbury is just starting to look at it, we're really kind of a unique animal, but we are actually probably the, one of the most aggressive outside of Boston EMS, we're pretty aggressive in, in what we offer for services for the citizens, I'd like to get a chance to talk about that at some point, but I do feel that I have a great group, and we just, I'm a new chief, I'm just trying to find my, find my niche, but I do want to work with everybody to try to make everybody understand what EMS really does offer to the citizens of Fall River.
Thank you, Mr. President, I yield.
There you go, Councilor C- four, Councilor Kabeen.
Yes, I, this resolution's intriguing, and I definitely am keeping an open mind on it, I mean, been around long enough to know what the purpose of Enterprise Funds are, we have one more water and sewer, so that was one of the questions I was gonna ask with regard to peer communities, and Councilor in Seat One will give an answer with regard to Secoq, and I know we're a different, different animal than, than the town of Secoq. Also, I do know that EMS has morphed into something much larger than it was when I first got elected to the city council, it's something that is a large entity now, and so, I do appreciate the, the honesty and the transparency that you're giving this council, you know, telling us that you can really keep an open mind on this thing, look at it, research it, because before I make a decision, again, I think it's an intriguing thing, we have a duty here to do what's best for the city, and, and that has always been my motivation along with everyone else's here, so, just in terms of, this is just pa, was just passed two weeks ago, so I didn't really expect that you guys would have, you know, an analysis ready for everybody, but I would be, like to look at other communities, peer communities our size, if any of them have done that, maybe have some conversations with them, and if they have, and, because before we make a decision, we want to make it educated decision, so, thank you, Mr. President, I yield.
There you go, Councilor C- one, Councilor Kabeen.
Thank you, Mr. President, first of all, Mr. Deon, thank you for conversations that we had, I know you and I have had a number of conversations regarding this and the willingness to even entertain this, I truly appreciate it, the mayor has, has stated to me that he is also willing to entertain it, from my colleague's standpoint and just the edification as to why I submitted this, again, I know my colleague in Seat, I always gotta count Seat Six, I should know this by now, he, he made a statement saying that this is as a result of the lease, this has nothing to do with the lease, this, this is really just what's in the best interest of the city of Fall River from a financial standpoint, and I think it's important, so, we have currently three Enterprise Funds, so, for folks at home who, who don't truly understand the difference between a General Fund and Enterprise Fund, essentially, you can look at it as four different checking accounts, right, we've got the General Fund, which handles all of our departments, right, and we have revenue coming in, all our state aid comes into this checking account, we divvy it up for all the departments, with the exception of those departments that have their own checking account, water and sewer, right, they have user fees, so we charge the users a fee for water and sewer, right, so based on how much water and how much sewer you use, you get charged a fee, so, I would say that a separate checking account makes the most sense because it gives us more visibility, right, and more transparency in terms of the costs associated with that department, especially if you're charging users an additional fee above and beyond what they're paying in, in property taxes and, and general taxes. The third, the fourth checking account is in EMS, so what I would say is, is that from my standpoint, I don't see a benefit for EMS having its own Enterprise Fund, because we do not charge a user fee, we charge the insurance company for a service, right, so, we're just essentially submitting bills and invoices to the insurance company, the insurance company reviews that, submits it to us, it goes into it, into the checking account. The problem becomes, is, is that as part of EMS, and I, and I fully support EMS, and I'm not suggesting in any way by eliminating an Enterprise Fund that we remove any funding that goes to EMS, what I am saying is, is that we are restricted in terms of what we can use that revenue for, so, your operating budget for FY twenty-six is sixteen point two million dollars, right, so that means at a minimum, you are raising sixteen point two million dollars of revenue to cover your salaries and expenses, and we see that there's retained earnings every year, so, what do we, in terms of revenue, what are we generating on a yearly basis, twenty million, twenty-five million?
Or just over seventeen from last year, I think it was like seventeen point one.
Seventeen million?
Yeah.
So, we've got seventeen million dollars that's being generated by EMS, so we, we, that's, that's on top of trying to justify indirect costs of close to two million dollars coming in, healthcare, some additional monies, so we, we have one point seven million dollars or a million dollars left over that could be utilized for other departments, or capital projects, or things like that, so, for those that want to argue whether or not that this makes sense, I would then say to those people that are not in agreement with eliminating this Enterprise Fund, just imagine this for a second, we have ten point nine million dollars that's coming in, in, in local receipts, fees that are collected through various departments, we've got a hundred thousand dollars in rentals, a hundred thousand dollars coming in from cemeteries, two point four million dollars coming in from license and permits, one point five million dollars coming in for fines of forfeiture, three point seven million dollars, which I disagree using, but it's in the budget for investment income, that's, that's part of this, one point three million dollars in Medicare reimbursement, and two hundred thousand dollars in miscellaneous for ten point nine million dollars, so imagine if we went down and said, okay, I'll take Medicare, one point three million dollars, do you know how we get that one point three million dollars in Medicare? It's all reimbursement from the schools, okay, that's school department money, that doesn't go to the school department, comes into the General Fund, so imagine if the school department said, on top of all the money that you give, I want one point two million dollars, because the Medicare reimbursement is coming from us, so the city is benefiting one point three million dollars, okay, we go to the cemetery, that's broken out, a hundred thousand dollars, so now I've got to reduce ten point nine million dollars by one point three million dollars, now I also got to reduce by a hundred thousand dollars, because the cemetery department wants it specifically for the cemeteries, right, and it goes down and down and down, and not every department in the city generates revenue, right?
I agree.
So, I, I would say the auditor's office, very important function, what revenue do they generate?
None.
None, so imagine if we just focused on the departments that are generating money, revenue, and we say we're only gonna allocate this revenue to those departments, I can tell you right now, the auditor's department is eliminated because they don't generate revenue, so the part of this is really just trying to make sure that, again, we are the city of Fall River, every department, every employee in the city of Fall River gets a paycheck, the paycheck says the city of Fall River, doesn't say the department name, so you can work for the police department, fire department, it's the city of Fall River, so all I am looking for is to eliminate the Enterprise Fund, move the revenue into the General Fund, and just be able to leverage that money that's there, but let's be fiscally responsible, so let's come up with policies that we can move and reallocate monies into a stabilization account, put it into a stabilization account maybe for public safety, so that we can have all your vehicles replaced, we can have the Fire Department vehicles replaced, we can have Police Department vehicles replaced, by doing it in the General Fund, we relieve some of the restrictions that we would otherwise have if it solely stays in the Enterprise Fund under EMS, and so that would be a more stringent and hotter justification to try to get this money to the other departments that need it, so that's all where I'm, where I was going with this entire conversation, I think it makes the most sense from a financial and a fiscal management standpoint, and I, and I appreciate the amount of money and effort that goes into the generating of, of this, this revenue, and I'm not looking to take away any money from EMS, it's, it's number one, to make sure that we still capture the revenue and allocate it to that department, so.
Okay.
Yep, no question.
I just wanted to be smart, it's one point three million dollars of retained earnings this year.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know.
So, but, so, so that's all I was, I was going with it, just from my, from my colleague's standpoint, it really is just to give the administration more flexibility for us to also bring in more money into the General Fund, so we can off, or at least try to ease the burden of the taxpayers, because, one, we still need to provide services to folks, and, and I, and I recognize, you know, at the end of the day, Fall River does a very good job, and, and I've, I've had this conversation with somebody the other day, and, and I understand everybody is struggling, we, we literally, I just had this conversation with an individual walking up the stairways with councillor in Seat Six, about the cost of living today, you know, and, and how challenging it is, and we, we have this conversation on a day-to-day basis, but I, I think the city of Fall River does a phenomenal job of providing services and minimizing the impact to taxpayers, I, I know taxpayers would not necessarily always agree with it, but there is not many places in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that you can move to that has a lower tax base than Fall River, or even Rhode Island to that, to that case, I could make the argument if I was living in Boston, we can go, we can move to Taunton, we can move south of four ninety-five, right, we have a very low tax rate, right, but that doesn't mean that we don't have work to do to make sure that we need to try to minimize the additional impact on residents, you know, we have rent issues, there's a number of issues that go there, but I, I think overall we do a good job, but this is just gonna make sure that we're doing even more of a job to bring in and infuse some additional revenue and not necessarily hit the tax base and just try to ease a burden a little bit, and still provide the services that everybody expects across the board, so with that, I yield.
There you go, Councilor C- two, Councilor Deon?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, so I do believe that New Bedford's EMS goes into the General Fund, so, there's an example, here we go again, it's always Fall River, New Bedford, but it is what it is, right now, with the revenues coming in, and all the trucks and, and personnel that's been added on to do the, the transfers, and that's financially covered. that's financially covered, correct?
Yes. Yes, we also provide vaccines for children. A lot of our vaccines for children program, we go into the senior centers and we do wellness checks and safety checks. And we have a lot of other programs that we provide to the community that are not reimbursable and we are able to cover all those services under the umbrella of the enterprise fund and still keep ourselves solvent.
Okay, and that's including the community health that we've, that we've getting involved in as well?
We're actually in the end, end stages of working in agreement with one of our local healthcare providers to find a reimbursement model. Senator Roderick's got us the $300,000 one-time grant to do our home visit program, to do feasibility and viability and how it impacted the community. And the results were so phenomenal that this healthcare facility in Fall River decided that the reimbursement model was there. So we're going to enter into an agreement with them so that the, there will be a reimbursement model for those home visits.
Okay, the reason I, the reason I bring this up, so we just recently with Brown entered into a contract for the transports. And the revenue that's going to be generated by that has not even been realized yet.
Correct.
So it's safe to assume that that $1.3 million is going to be far larger in the fiscal year 2026.
It could be.
Fingers crossed.
There are, there are a lot of outside factors that work into, and I'm sure Sean can agree. There are a lot of outside factors. Medicare and Mass Health determine their rates in January. So unfortunately for fiscal municipalities, that, that comes in halfway through a year. So you don't know how it's going to impact. But yes, we should do, we should do well.
Okay, so again, so that increases the 1.3 significantly. Also with the home health visits and all the reimbursements you're speaking of. So I agree. It's not about hurting anybody. It's about doing what's best for the city of Fall River, the residents, the taxpayers. Because you're, the service that you're providing and the way you've changed with the times is strictly local. It's strictly Fall River.
It is. Some of the home visit program is regional because some of the smaller communities can't provide that service. But we do the best we can on all fronts to try to remain fiscally responsible. And with growth, sometimes there's expenses. And I think we're past the expense part of the program. And now we're kind of in the, let's keep, let's keep, let's try to just keep where we are and just perfect what we have. So that's, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, and I think what we're trying to accomplish is, you know, and I don't care who you ask, I don't care when it's asked. I don't care if it's at a debate, talking to individual people. What's the most important thing? Public safety. Well, this is hopefully a path to ensuring our public safety. All departments are the best that they can be so that we can service the people of this city the best we can service them. And if we can have some type of account that we can also guarantee capital items, which we've never been able to do before, which again, is only going to bolster our public safety. I think that's what I'm looking for. I'll speak for myself. That's what I'm looking for, and I think we can accomplish that. And you do deserve a lot of credit for what you've accomplished and the revenues you're bringing in. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. Three, Councilor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for coming tonight and thank the councils that wrote the resolution. I think it's very important. Just one thing to add, Mike or Beth or Emily have the, because this is going to be, you know, a big undertaking. And there's going to be all parties involved in this. And I know we talked about the different city departments. But the most one that I'm interested in is the fire, the fire department. And have they been, I'm sure they're going to get involved in this as well with you guys. But have they been involved with you yet right now? I know it's early in the discussions, but.
No, they haven't.
Okay. And it's really, it's early, but I think it's important to obviously.
It's real early. This only came up about two weeks ago.
I got you.
In discussions with Councilor seat one and, and Councilor Deon also. So we're working on it, we're going to work on it.
I know you will, I know you will. And I just wanted to throw that out there, and I'm sure they're going to get involved in it. I was just curious if they got involved so far.
I would like to say though, however, I have met with Chief Bacon on several occasions. And I have expressed to him that there are ways, if there are repairs that need to be done in the stations, we do pay 25% rent in each station. Or there are ways, if there are things that need to be done, that we can help to support that with whatever we have in revenues or free cash. So he is aware of his ability to be able to come and have discussions if he needs something within the enterprise fund as it stands right now.
Very good. All right, thank you, I yield.
There you go, Councilor.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table is made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second.
Motion to adjourn finance is made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee of Finance is now adjourned. City Council, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilor C. Two.
Here.
Deon.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pereira. Panti.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
Tith.
Here.
President Camaro.
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing pursuant to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any trespass.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit this meeting through any medium. Tendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and now deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Mr. President?
Councilor seat six, Councilor Panti.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to make a motion to waive the rules. There was two individuals who had a soccer practice that wanted to speak during citizens' input. And I would ask my colleagues if we can make a motion to waive the rules under our same rules for three minutes for these individuals to come speak to us. They had a soccer practice and they got here a little late, so that's a motion.
Motion has to be made in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Could you please come down, two of you? And again, as the council stated, you have three minutes to speak. You can state your name and what the cause that you'd like to speak about is, please. I'd appreciate it. You can join in.
Hi, Sarah and James Riley, 1679 Copacott Road. We are here to support Paul Hart's resolution to assess and amend existing dumping fines. Many volunteers work tirelessly cleaning garbage from Fall River streets, waterways, watershed, and from the bio reserve. Many are here with me today. Supporting stricter fines makes our work count. As we are abutters to the bio reserve, I often coordinate with EPOs, my friends Kate and John, and we act as eyewitnesses, provide evidence, often catching dumpers and chasing them out ourselves. Our environmental police officers are doing an outstanding job holding offenders accountable. We have the full support of the FRPD on this matter. But in order for the law to have teeth, we need consequences severe enough to deter offenders. Last month, someone dumped 43 contractor bags of garbage adjacent to the Copacott. EPOs obtained a full confession and made the offender come and clean it up. She was fined $300 for this. A week later, we caught someone unloading a U-Haul. There are countless cases of dumpers acting with impunity in broad daylight. We are long past the point of reassessing our city ordinances to guarantee that the fines fit the crime. Fines should reflect significant and unquantifiable manpower costs to the city, investigation, enforcement, DCM removal, and cost of elimination. The fines should reflect the growing costs of legal removal and should be compounded for good measure. And finally, the fines should be posted so the public cannot claim ignorance, especially in our protected forests and adjacent to our drinking water. The topic of a clean city is at the very forefront of this election season. But for two decades, Nat and Dave Mello have been saying, a clean neighborhood is a safe neighborhood. And I think that we can all stand behind that today. Thank you.
Could you do me one favor though? Could you please repeat your name and address and everyone at the table so we'll know who it is?
Yes, Sarah Riley and James Riley, 1679 Copacott Road.
Thank you.
Katie Wyant, 342 Bullock Street in Fall River.
Thank you. Councilor C. Three, Councilor Hart.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you very much for coming down here tonight. I know I've been talking about this for a long time. And we're going to do, what we'll do after tonight is this is going to get, go on to the ordinance committee. I'll talk to the chairman of the ordinance committee, Linda Pereira. You're going to be invited, you guys will be invited down to those meetings. And I think you're right, I think it's about time that the, there's some teeth into the ordinances. But also too, it's going to be, there's teeth into enforcing it, and that's going to be a major key. And, but to see those pictures like I've seen them before, it's absurd that, and that they get, sometimes get away with it. And I remember the time when you, about a couple of weeks ago, when you posted that dump on there and we did catch the person, and that's kudos to you guys.
These are all from 2025, just so that you guys know. This is all this year alone.
And like I said, we'll, I'll give you, I'll be in touch with you guys very shortly, let you know when the meeting is. And we'll definitely get to the bottom of it. I know Lauren's given me a lot of the ordinances, not just from this city, but throughout the Commonwealth. So we have that to go by. But we'll do a lot more research as well. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, and thank you for making an exception for us.
Councilor C. Two, Councilor Deon.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. I think this is a great resolution. Appreciate you coming as well. I'm not on the ordinance committee, so I'd just like to make one suggestion. I know that there are construction companies or people who are dumping C and D materials. Unfortunately, it's less expensive to pay the fine than to get rid of the C and D materials, which is why they're doing it. So I would like to think that they set that fine about $3,000 because then they'll think twice. They're not going to dump it there anymore.
The chief is working on it right now.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down. Thank you. Ma'am Clerk?
Mr. President, the first item before you is a request for the mayor, from the mayor, for the confirmation of the appointment of Trevor Coelho to the position of purchasing agent.
Motion to confirm the, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Under motion, Counselor C-6, Counselor Ponti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend this appointment and confirmation of Mr. Coelho, somebody I know that's been involved with him and his young family in the city for many years. I don't know if you're a Durfee graduate or not, but that's okay if you're a Dartmouth graduate. The Indians always beat us.
Diamond.
Oh, diamond. Oh, even better. But Mr. Coelho, I know, I've known him for a couple of years, just in and out of the community, and I commend this appointment and confirmation. I appreciate the work of Rebecca, though. It goes without notice that Mr. Coelho isn't, Coelho isn't gonna be successful without her and the guidance that she's been able to provide him. She stepped up in a time of need for this community. She was very well spoken before the city council. She's working extremely hard in her department, and I just wanna commend you, too, for somebody like Trevor needing somebody to be a little bit of a mentor. And it kinda goes to show how strong City Hall can be when, you know, there's good leadership getting things done, and Trevor will be successful if you continue to mentor him, so I wanna commend you with that. With that being said, I did have a conversation with Ms. Arpti tonight regarding the salary, annual salary for this position. While I agree with it, I do think that this role of purchasing agent does have a good part of your job duty will have to do with the school department. So I am gonna, I have urged her, and I will urge the interim city administrator, to see if we could get half of the salary reimbursed back from the school department for this as you build this going into next fiscal year, because the salary, which I think is a good salary for this role, a lot of that role and a lot of that duty, I don't know if it's 50% or 75% of the time, it comes from the school department, but I just hope that the school department can reimburse the city as part of their indirects. So with that being said, I'm happy for this, and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And the Indians do not always beat us. Occasionally.
In football, they do.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Trevor's here.
I don't know.
Ma'am Clerk?
The next item is also a request from the mayor for the confirmation of the appointment of Kalen Fratato to the cultural council.
Motion confirmed. Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to take item nine out of order, please?
Second.
Motion to take item nine out of order has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is a proposed ordinance for the Veterans Benefit Agent and Director of Veteran Services with regards to his salary schedule amendment.
Refer to ordinance?
Nope.
No.
Motion passed through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made and seconded. Under motion, Counselor C-7, Counselor Pogba?
Just wanna echo what I said two weeks ago regarding Mr. Ferris. Again, I'm very pleased that this is finally coming to the forefront, a well-deserving individual who does great work for our veteran community, and I look forward to our continued collaboration for our overall community of veterans. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C-6?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with my colleague in seat seven's comments. I'm still frustrated on a number of different topics with regards how this veteran agent has been treated, and I am even more frustrated with the fact that this was held up in a subcommittee that one person decided to hold up amongst themselves, and it took a body of five to pull it out of a subcommittee that was just gonna sit there. If it wasn't for their leadership, it still would be stuck in subcommittee.
Can we get an ordinance correct?
I'm sorry, in the ordinance subcommittee, not in this subcommittee.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So that's not how we do business. That's not how things should be handled. I am all over the fact, and the city administration knows, that I'm hoping to get some kind of a resolve on what those claims were, because it's bothering me. I've had a great conversation with our VSO agent. I think his heart is in the right place. I think what he's doing for veterans, it goes without saying, not sitting here to try to earn political points, but he's not looking to play politics. He's looking to represent veterans, and that says a lot of what we have here, and that these are the kind of people that we wanna celebrate their success. We wanna celebrate how they show up every day and celebrate the fact that they're not in it for the money. They're in it to make a difference in people's lives. And that is exactly what this VSO agent, based on my experiences, based on my conversations, based on my direct contact with him, has been. So I wanna credit my colleague in seat one and seat seven for getting this out of the ordinance committee and getting this moving, because it would've just stood there if it wasn't for your leadership getting this out and getting this done. So this is an example of a council working united to try to do something good for good people, and that's exactly what this is. I yield.
There you go, Counselor. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Clerk?
The next item is a number of traffic ordinance recommendations for the traffic commission.
Second.
Motion for a committee on ordinance legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on September 16th, 2025, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. This is a proposed ordinance for handicap parking.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble. Second.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble has been made and seconded. Roll call on emergency preamble.
Counselor Skadim?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Ponti?
Yes.
Raposo?
Yes.
Tith?
Yes.
President Camara?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings. Second.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on September 16th, 2025, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is for miscellaneous traffic.
Motion to pass through first reading. Second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on September 16th, 2025, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be granted leave to withdraw. This is for the Director of Emergency Management Agency's salary amendment.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is a proposed ordinance for miscellaneous traffic for-
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a proposed ordinance also for second reading and enrollment as amended for the Library Programs Revolving Fund.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the city of Fall River faces ongoing challenges with the prevention of littering and illegal dumping in parks, neighborhoods, and preservation areas, which creates public health and safety risks, decreases quality of life for residents, and negatively affects local ecosystems, and whereas the existing city ordinances utilize a civil penalty of up to $300 for littering violations within these public spaces, which are issued by the Fall River Police Department, and whereas many residents, visitors, and business owners in the city of Fall River have expressed concern regarding refuse, being left behind, and not properly disposed of, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene with the police chief, the director of city operations, and corporation council to discuss current enforcement methods to prevent and penalize the act of illegal dumping and littering, and potential amendments to existing fines to assist with deterring this unlawful activity throughout the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a citation for the St. Anthony of the Desert Marinide Catholic Church.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt citation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is also a citation for the Greater Fall River Art Association.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Under motion, Counselor C-7, Counselor Pogba?
I just wanna just give to my colleagues and to the public as well, so this was a result of one of the ARPA investments into our community. This is the Greater Fall River Art Association and the launch of their mobile art studio, which was an idea that came to fruition, and we're finally gonna have it happen. So the dedication is on Saturday, September 27th, at 9:00 a.m. over at Heritage State Park. I would invite my colleagues and the public to attend. This will be a vehicle that will be great to our community, to our kids. They'll be able to go out, similar to how the bookmobile kinda operates, but in the idea that they'll be able to go out and bring art opportunities and classes to different sections of the city. So I would encourage my colleagues to attend and support this great opportunity. I yield.
Could you just repeat the date again, the time, because I couldn't even get you?
Saturday, September 27th, 9:00 a.m. at Heritage State Park, down near the water.
So this coming Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item are licenses for the renewal of auto body shop licenses.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And those licenses are for John V. Pachico and Michael Pachico, DBA Celebrity Auto, and Richard Ducalos, DBA Richards Auto Body and Paint. The next item are applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Do you wanna read them first before we go on it?
Yes, thank you. Roger W. Pipa, DBA Pipa's Garage, Robert W. Sariva, DBA Peckham Street Garage, and Jewel Said, DBA Henry's Tire Enterprises, Inc.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a light order for the conducting of a lighting survey at three locations on Ridamo Street. We did learn today that the, instead of the director of city operations, that it is the Fall River Police Department that is handling this type of work going forward. So, Mr. President, if I could have a motion to amend the order?
Motion so made. Second.
Motion to amend has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt as amended. Second.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Adopted as amended.
You have a number of claims?
Motion to refer to corporation counsel. Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And if we could have a brief recess for the signing of ordinances, please.
Should we, Counselor, recess for two minutes?